Okay, I'd like to call to order the June 1st Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee meeting.
And we've noted that is being recorded. The Concord School Committee is also in session and we'll have a roll call, please.
Anderson present.
Booth present.
Now present.
Is that present?
Brady present.
Wilson present.
Okay, so our first order of business is the, actually this is yours Sarah, forgive me, the regional budget.
Yes, Jared, do you want to walk us through?
Sure, um, so in the packet and on the agenda is a vote to, well, is a motion to revote the FY22 budget. So what you would need to do is after discussion, you would need to basically plug in those new numbers, which would be the same FY22 budget, but the assessments would go down if you choose to choose to reduce that. And that needs to be in the motion language. So again, the budget would stay the same. We wouldn't be reducing anything. We would just be reducing the assessments due to the surplus because it will be over that 5%.
And Jared, have you recommended an amount or is, I guess that's part of our discussion tonight?
It's sort of part of the discussion, but last week I did, I did recommend when I thought there would be a surplus amount. That was $450,000. I just want to pull that up really quickly.
425.
25, thank you. I just got in and done everything. So yeah, 125,000. So, and basically what, on any amount, I'll be able to plug in the assessments based on what you, what you decide. That amount would just go, what it would do is would increase the E and D offset. FY22's current amount is 300,000. So you would just increase that amount and that would offset the assessments.
I hope we could continue our conversation about the surplus before we get to the estimated 425 and maybe go through these one by one. The first item on that list was a prepay for special education for the region. Am I correct that best estimate today is $450,000?
Correct, no change right now.
That would lead us to the prepay for next year for MacBook Airs, 370 in number. Can you speak to how this fits with that overall calendar of cycling these devices? I think it was only at K8 that we had what could be constituted a surplus because, because they were necessary for COVID. Am I correct?
You are. Laura, do you want to go through and I can talk about the, how the expense works or?
Sure. So we're still in the process of building the one-to-one program at the high school where the district is sponsoring all of the laptops. We're still graduating out the upperclassmen who may still have chosen to buy their own or lease and some of those other early options we had. So this 370 is what would onboard the entire incoming ninth grade class with a machine. So we're, we're still building here because we haven't always provided the laptops at the high school. That's relatively new in the last two, two years. I've lost track because of COVID's time factor, but it's, it's still something building at this point.
And had we not had this surplus, we would have foregone this, correct?
No, so.
No, no, it's budgeted for, so.
So we have also in this year's FY22 budget.
Yep.
That number. So every year, we're just, let me say this back to you. We are concerned that we might hit a year we don't have the surplus. So this, so every year we're sort of carrying, we're prepaying, but we're still carrying the laptops in our FY22 budget. So that makes sense.
Year, last August, you approved, it was, it was last June, had approved to prepay last year, which allowed us to carry it this year.
So what we're saying is having started to front load, we're hoping we can continue to front load and maybe we can, maybe we can't in future years, but this year, yes.
Right, right.
That leads us to the bus and we know we have a replacement schedule for that. So we have both the replacement schedule to look at and then also the desire to electrify made possible by this surplus and not to be considered a, a, if you will, prepay like the, like the computers.
Correct. So what this will do is this would allow us to either go ahead on an additional bus next year that was budgeted for leasing or have that as a cost savings. And then if we do purchase this, we will get Chapter 71 money back, starting in FY23 for five years. That would pay approximately 70 to 80% of this cost.
And forgive me Jared, this is not a quiz. I just don't remember. Is there an offset for a lease amount for a single bus that's significant and worth our note tonight?
Yeah, 30 and change.
Okay.
I do think we do not have funds in the FY22 budget to consider electric next year. So that might be worth noting in your decision making.
Thank you, okay. And then I think the one that we need a little more debate on, up to the members of course, is the design services for the amenities building. We know we're at 19% impermeable surface up there. We know that we are constrained by that. We also know we're constrained by a code expectation. And Cynthia, I think it was you that brought up the idea of looking for dispensation, so to speak, in the form of a home rule or some equivalent through the state legislature. Can we pursue that conversation any further tonight?
And also just to clarify, in order to look into a home room politician or something similar, do we need to have a designer? Is that pre-designed?
I don't know. But I think spending $75,000 with the expectation that we would get a waiver, and it's still 19 toilets, am I correct?
22 with the waiver.
Right.
Yeah, 44 without.
And I'd like to go find out if there's any way that they would consider the high school bathrooms as partly toilet.
I believe, I believe that's been talked about in, including BD even, but they're just too far away according to code.
Well, I don't think our property can support such a structure even if we get the waiver. So I think we need to find a way to come up with a better solution and work on it this year. We've gone five years already. It's, it's a terrible situation, I agree.
Like a better solution, like less toilets?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, just making sure. That's what I suspected.
Yeah.
So if we were to pull this off the, the list of expenditures to be authorized, what, what path would we have going forward? It's regional property, but we know that the town of Concord and their, their building department is very supportive of our objectives. Would we start there? Would we go to our rap? What would be inquiries that would take us forward on this?
It's been two years, I would say, but we certainly have talked with the Concord officials. And that's really how you got to the place you're in. So I think it would have to be the state level reps and, and such. And we need, I'm not going to profess, I know exactly what the next steps are, but we certainly have been in touch with the Concord officials to get this far.
Would you want to charge the business office with this? A, do you want a school committee ambassador along with you riding shotgun? How do you want to do it? Any ideas, anybody?
Yeah, I think, I think once we know what the process is, certainly if we're communicating with legislators and stuff, we would certainly want school committee engagement there. So we could work on that in July and probably have some process information back to you, I would think.
Sarah, is that satisfactory?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's any kind of reserves we need to sort of mentally plan for, for, I don't know, for, for legal, for anything.
Oh, otherwise.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, we can't.
We don't know what, we don't even know what the process, we don't know anything about.
Yeah, unfortunately, either we need to go, so this is our next conversation, either need to go into a stabilization fund, but that would be capital only.
Right.
Yep.
Or we can't legally carry anymore in our E and D.
Right.
We haven't topped that, right? With that, our E and D is going to be topped out, I think.
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, you could always for next year, at any point, you can increase the budget by using E and D if I needed to find 75,000.
Or something else.
Or something else.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's my only concern is just to understand, you know, what does the process cost or what? I mean, but I know that we don't, but I, I think that Cynthia has a very good idea to, to look down this road.
And I think my 75 could have been high. That was someone who we chose and rather than high at the time. But you never know. So would we agree they're looking at 500,000? Is that, is that accurate?
Yes, if you held back the 75, yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I, I think this is hard for me to get my head around, but I read the law and it is, the law says you should, you reduce the assessments. But I think it's a difficult thing to understand when you're saying, like, it doesn't, so maybe if you could explain it a little bit better to me, then the public will understand how we wouldn't be reducing the budget, but we're reducing the assessments. It's a hard thing for me to visualize.
Yeah. Because our costs are staying the same for next year.
Okay.
So our, our general fund budget is what the assessments are based on.
Yeah.
We're not reducing any costs for next year, but we will have a surplus. That surplus can then be used to offset the assessments by increasing our E and D amount. By increasing the E and D amount, there's a formula that drives it based on the enrollment that will then give me new assessment numbers with that budget number staying the same. So it's just more revenue, in a way, it's more revenue for the budget next year that's not based on the assessments.
So it's a revenue, it's effectively a revenue line item.
Yes.
That we are authorized as a region to manage in this way.
Correct.
Were this a town, school, district, this would not be an option. This money would revert back to the general operating fund.
Very, yep. It would go to free cash.
For free cash, okay, thank you.
So that's just a really good way to phrase it, right? It's additional revenue.
And that's because basically it's so complicated to return the money to the corresponding towns, that this is the mechanism for, for moving it forward, for, yeah, okay.
And are you comfortable Jared with a, a $500,000 number for a purpose tonight? And then the debate is how much is assessment directed? How much is stabilization directed?
Correct. I am. And Dr. Hunter?
Yeah, yes. Yep.
So I'm going to ask that we debate stabilization first because that's what we hold back.
Correct.
And then release the rest to do an assessment offset or reduction, I should say. Is that okay with my colleagues? So I know that we have one or two stabilization funds at the present time. Would this be an existing fund? I believe so because.
It would be.
We can only use an existing fund without town meeting creating, or two town meetings creating a new one.
Correct. It would be the capital one that was set up and voted, I believe, in 1991.
And is that coffer sitting empty at the present time?
It, it has, I want to say, a couple, I believe it has a couple thousand dollars.
Very strong balance.
So effectively, all right. And Jared, I think we'll start with you. Can you speak to the pros and cons of a stabilization fund that is not earmarked for specifics beyond regional capital expenses?
Sure, I think it's, I mean, it's an additional contingency that the district will have to be used on capital projects. Right now, some unknown ones being a fairly new campus. Ultimately, this, this is just to offset assessments for any future project. It's just another way to have that money set aside to be used for that purpose. So I, I can't think of any real cons. But I, I think, yeah.
Can you speak to how we manage or invest that money? I'm curious, if it's sitting liquid cash, there's an incentive to use it. If it's tied up in investments, there's a disincentive that then has to fit with some kind of capital project schedule. And we don't really have a clear schedule for what might happen vis a vis roads, lighting, et cetera. Would the money incentivize us to work on that?
It, it does, I believe it does just sit there. And I, I don't believe it, it, it gets any interest, believe it or not. I wish, I wish E and Z on this. But it, the money just is earmarked for that purpose, for capital. And it just, it goes on our books and it's, it's, it's an asset.
Got it, okay. If the 425 becomes 500, where would you recommend that 75 be placed and why? And I'm catching you on the fly. I'm not, I'm not trying to make you dance here.
No, I know that.
Your thoughts?
Sure. So my thoughts are, I think there's, the paving has to get done. And if that's in, you know, two years or three years, having money is available to offset that. And also providing a mechanism that we use in case there is further surpluses in coming years to help offset, to help offset the assessments. I do really like the idea of giving money back, especially in a time like this. I think, I think this, the FinComs would really appreciate that. And I think it's something that we can certainly do. We know that they came up on their numbers and it's, it's our goodwill to say, hey, this is some additional money that we don't think we, we don't need right now. And whether you decide to put 60% in the stabilization or 50 or 40, I think any number in there is a good idea because the paving is going to, it's going to keep going up, whether it's 10% each year or 20% each year. And who knows, maybe this is just going to offset the inflation. I hate to say that, but, but I, I do think it's, it's a good idea to put some money in there for, and you never know what's going to happen down the line. While we do have the 5% in E and D, that's not always easy to, easy to maintain. And I, I think anything over 4% is really, really good. So that's sort of my, my thinking on that. And then I know that we had a discussion about the turf field last week. That could be used to offset that. And I know that's a, a different conversation. And then as we continue to build the, the capital at the high school and identify needs, things that we don't even know yet, this can also help offset those future needs.
Is, is there any risk involved in declaring exactly what the surplus is going to be now for purposes of a vote when we know in fact it's not going to be whatever number we declare tonight?
Truthfully, yes, but I have a really, I have a really tight handle on the money. And I know, I know that I'm comfortable with this being June 1st and this amount. And if E and D goes down to 9.4.97, it goes to 4.97. Or do we prepay a little bit less of the special ed tuitions? I feel very comfortable authorizing this. But there is risk, but the only risk would be, you know, if there's an unknown tuition that has not been encumbered that we just don't know about. But we would know, we would know about that right now. There's really no big unforeseen costs. There's really no unforeseen costs.
And you've just told us exactly how you'd manage those future uncertainties.
Correct.
To close out the fiscal year.
Yeah.
So I know part of our debate is how much to put in which direction. I would certainly weigh in on the side of the importance of putting at least some in a stabilization account. I think given the things that have been, that, that Jared's laid out and the experience over several years of seeing the paving and lighting getting kicked down the road and down the road further, I think that's something that's really important that we do soon. And for us to be able to put aside and save for it feels like the responsible way to do it. At the same time, I'd like to give, put as much into the revenue stream for next year as possible, certainly. But I think maintaining a stabilization account is, is the responsible way to go, at least to some extent.
Jared, can you just remind us on the timing of all this? We met on this tonight because of the town meetings being so soon. But can you just remind us of the big picture timeline?
So to, you, you can reduce the budget at any time. You can do it today. You can do it on June 30th. You can do it in July. I thought the urgency today to get this meeting in was to reduce the budgets for town meeting.
Reduce the assessments.
I'm sorry, yeah, reduce the assessments for town meeting. But this is again, something that you can do at any time. Obviously you can't increase the budget, but you can always reduce the budget and reduce assessments. So again, the, the timing was just trying to get this to town meeting. But if it takes longer.
They wouldn't have to decide stabilization amounts tonight, but they would have to decide any amounts to lower assessment at town meeting.
Correct.
So that's your only timely decision, if that is helpful to you. I just thought laying it out might be.
So.
So just to review that, oh, sorry, go say Cynthia.
I was going to say, so we decided to say 300,000 to reduce the assessments and wait to vote on what happens with the stabilization. That's an action. So we just say it back to you, what if we vote no on no stabilization, then what happens with the 200?
That monies would then just, they would go back into E and D and then we'd be over the 5% and we would be reducing assessments even further.
Okay.
So it really, it's a matter of how much are we kind of committing to reduce assessments now? And then we can always reduce them further later.
Correct.
Does it have to have a motion on the table here or do we want to get a feel? I mean, I, I kind of like what Cynthia just said, which is maybe we, you know, move to reduce by 300 now, continue to discuss the stabilization account and you can always reduce further later.
So just so you know, in case I wasn't clear, to, you would have to, basically on July 1st, that money goes away. So you would have, if you want to add any money that's part of the surplus, my estimated surplus, into the stabilization account, that would need to be done before June, June 30th.
Okay, so that's still a short time. It doesn't have to be tonight, but it's got to be soon if not tonight.
Yeah.
I, I would look favorably on the $500,000 figure, knowing that the business office can manage any small variations in that. And devote half of it to reducing the assessments and the other half to our stabilization needs or anticipated projects, which we will not put off too much longer.
Although I'll have to say, I'm very uncomfortable with having four members of this committee, whenever it is, devote something and not have to go to town meeting.
Wait, sorry, say that again, Cynthia?
Yeah, that's a good point. Make that very, thank you.
Can decide what to do with that money.
We, we do an end run around town meeting for, for one of our schools.
Both towns.
Both towns.
It has no say.
It's both towns because the, both towns approved stabilization fund to begin with.
In 1991?
In 1990, I understand in 1991, but, right? And they approved monies. I mean, this is the question, you know, a lot of this is monies that were not necessarily from the towns. And this is, this is an anomalous year, I think.
And it's, it's also, I mean, the stabilization for fund is for things that we would otherwise have to request money for.
We'd have to go to long-term caps or whatever, Concord's equivalent.
We would have a capital article.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. And essentially what you would be voting, just so you know, I, I wasn't very clear on this. You would essentially be, since our E and D is now certified, you'd be moving monies from E and D, that is, the current E and D amount into the stabilization account. Therefore, I would end in a surplus. That surplus would then fill that E and D back. And then if there's any more money, that would go, also go back to the town. So again, what you're doing is you, you're increase, you're moving E and D money to the stabilization account. You cannot move money, surplus money directly into the stabilization account. That would have to go to town meeting. But you can move E and D money, but I've identified this surplus that would fill that.
That would then refill the E and D.
Got it. But to utilize those funds in the stabiliz, in the stabilization fund is totally at the discretion of the school committee.
Correct. Or members.
Yeah.
So I, I just have to say, last time, as Heather's aware, this account got emptied out to purchase very expensive, I would call them vanity signs. So they were told it was the last thing of the high school project and there's nothing else to be done in the future, which is not correct as we know with the paving. So it's, it's, there's no earmark whatsoever. So I would be more comfortable with a lower money and for us to have more money going back to the towns and us to have a further discussion about perhaps bringing forward a new town meeting article for more earmarked stabilization fund. But I don't think we have to decide that all tonight. That's just an idea.
It's a tough one. I hear what you're saying Cynthia, because like you said, I was, I was a part of that, to me frustrating meeting when we, when we emptied out the fund for a couple of signs. At the same, I guess I, I want to be able to trust the committee going forward to make the right decisions and to focus on the things that the committee has established as priorities, like the paving and the lights, you know, the things that we have brought up before and are clearly not irresponsible, you know, they're responsible decisions to make. So I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing what you're saying and also, also sharing the flip side of that, which is I would like this committee to be able to, you know, plan responsibly and then trust itself to make the right decisions going forward.
Yeah, if we think that we're going to be asking the towns for warrant articles about paving and lights in the next year or two, right? It's nicer, it's nice, it's, I, I think, I, I think it's appropriate or whatever it, it works to ask for less at the time and reserve something now for that purpose. But I do, I do get worried about money sitting for too long and trying to make sort of an endowment that, that, without a purpose.
Right. But if those things are seen as short-term enough, it's going to be primarily that, you know, the same committee or a very similar committee sitting here making the decisions. And so if we all decide this is what we're putting it in here for, obviously I'll be gone and that'll flip one. And, you know, but that's it for the next year. And like Sarah said, if this is something happening in the next couple of years, I think you could say that it's the responsible thing to put some money away for it. So if you all think that you're going to continue to prioritize for that for the next couple of years, then I would. I would say that we should make that, and fill the stabilization, not fill it, increase it.
I don't, I don't think we can formally dictate to a stabilization fund that was created by the town meeting, but the ideal which we should achieve, I think, with money that's not ours, we're just stewards of this money. The ideal is to bring capital articles to town meeting presenting our need with this money in the stabilization fund as a partial offset. So that everything sees the light of day.
Yeah. Yeah.
But these are, this is a conversation that we can continue today.
Sorry, Mike thought I was talking.
No problem.
We had a new member.
Did you make a motion? Sorry about that.
So the the motion that's been prepared for us asks for the operative sentence to read quote, and this is not a motion yet. After increasing the E and D total from three hundred thousand to X because of a budget surplus in fiscal twenty-one, the Concord and Carlisle's assessments are Y and Z. You know, strictly driven by the formula. So we are declaring a current balance of three hundred thousand to be increased by, let us say for discussion, five hundred thousand, knowing that takes us over our limit with the the balance over the five percent maximum flowing to stabilization. Do I have it right? And three hundred thousand represents what percentage right now, Jared?
Three hundred thousand. So right now we're about one point seven, so three hundred thousand, just simple math. Less than, way less than one. Yeah, like point two.
So what am I missing here?
The three hundred thousand is the part you've already allocated as revenue.
Right.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And that's already reserved.
So, and that brings us to four point nine nine presently.
So if you did not, if you did not reserve that three hundred thousand for FY twenty-two budgets already, that would be an additional surplus.
Right.
So that's what they call reserve to reduce.
So in terms of the wording for a motion, if we were to say court suggested split the five hundred to fifty, two fifty, so with the wording then what, what would that do to this wording? Would we, after increasing the E and D total from three hundred to, would we still say to eight hundred or would we say to five fifty?
I would say.
Because we're gonna, we would in theory take two fifty out to put into a stabilization fund.
Correct. So you, I, I think you would completely leave, you wouldn't talk about stabilization account in this in, in this motion. This is strictly for what you would like to increase. Try and pull it back up. What you would want to increase the E and D amount to, which would be.
I guess my question, it's increasing the ED and E and D amount that's being used as a revenue stream, not the total E and D amount.
Correct. So if you were gonna put in three hundred thousand, you would say after increasing the excess and deficiency total from three hundred thousand to six hundred thousand.
Got it. And then we just need the new totals then. If we were gonna do it that way, three hundred to six hundred, then Concord's assessment is, and we need a new assessment number that's minus.
So if we move three hundred and then there's an additional two hundred surplus that also defaults to E and D and, and then is directed toward the stabilization. Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
So first here, let me try to clarify first, are we, there are a couple of numbers being thrown around. Either increasing the E and D revenue line by two fifty or by three hundred. Is there kind of a Cynthia had said three hundred, I think court said two fifty. Is there kind of a consensus on what number that should be? Cause then we can work with a number.
We need to hear from other people. I'm a three, court's two fifty.
I, I just wonder what is the reasoning be, be, behind those numbers? I know, Cor, are you, are you just going to default to fifty or what is the reasoning?
My, mine is arbitrary, knowing that we have needs in both places and the needs are inexact. What do the two towns deserve if we can help by way of a reduced assessment, whatever we can provide? What do we need for future projects, subject to public scrutiny? So we don't have the the four member phenomenon, whatever we can provide. So those sort of uncapped needs said to me, split it down the middle. What I think I heard Cynthia say is you've got a good start with two hundred in stabilization, show the towns your, your, your care and your prudence. And do I sort of have it right Cynthia?
Yep. Sarah, I think pointed out, you know, we know we need to do the paving soon. So let's do it and say, here we've got an extra two hundred put aside to make it a little less painful. At our next town meeting.
To show that we're preparing, right? That we thought about.
So you said two hundred two. What if we work with three hundred and two hundred as our numbers? I'm just trying to create a motion here.
Yes, I, I, I can support that.
Okay, great. So we have three hundred and two hundred as our numbers. So then Jared, can you help me with wording this motion then? So I will say, basically it'll be after increasing E and D from three hundred to six hundred because of a budget surplus, then what does, what do Concord's assessment and Carlisle's assessment become? And then I.
It doesn't matter. It's whatever the percentage says. I mean, he can run the math, but the percentage doesn't change.
Right. Doesn't change, but you would need to fill in the assessment number.
I need to fill in the assessment number, right?
Yeah.
So can you?
Yep. Yep. So Concord's assessment number would be twenty-four million three, three hundred and seventy-six thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine.
Okay.
Carlisle's assessment would be seventy, seven million, one hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and fifty-four.
Okay. Concord, twenty-four million, three seventy-six, seven seventy-nine, and Carlisle, seven million, one fifty, three fifty-four.
Correct.
Right? Okay. So I'm gonna read that motion then.
Jared, just double check your math. We're going formal now. That's with six hundred not three. So you added three hundred and apportioned it out to the two towns.
Yep.
Okay.
And that's including debt.
That's including debt.
Okay, perfect. That's what we needed. I will move then for the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee, that the town is that so I'm listening here? That the town raise and appropriate the sum of thirty-five million, seven hundred fifty-nine thousand, three hundred seventy-four dollars as the town's apportioned share of the Concord Carlisle Regional School District Budget for the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty-two. And that the same be expended only for such purposes and under the direction of the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee. After increasing the excess and deficiency total from three hundred thousand to six hundred thousand because of a budget surplus in FY twenty-one, Concord's assessment will be twenty-four million, three hundred seventy-six thousand, seven hundred seventy-nine dollars. And Carlisle's assessment would be seven million, one hundred fifty thousand, three hundred fifty-four dollars. Is there a second?
A second? Just discussion, should it read town singular? Am I being too fussy?
This is actually what's my understanding, because we've had this question before, is that this is what goes to each town. So when they use it as their
Fine.
Article, it makes sense.
Thank you very much.
So just for a point of clarity here, we're, Jared, we need to amend on the floor of town meeting.
Meeting. Yeah.
I don't think there'll be any objections. Probably not.
One of you will have to take.
Yeah. So basically Sarah will do that in Carlisle and I'll do it in Concord, right? Yay, we get to be the good cop. We have good news.
Just so you know, I didn't tell you the math. So if this holds, Concord will be saving two hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. And Carlisle will be saving sixty-eight thousand, forty dollars.
Awesome. I love bringing good news to town meeting.
So someone check my math quick. It's right. And I'll already just writing that down.
Revoting yet?
Let's see. Any more discussion? Sarah, you wanna call for?
I think we can vote. Yep. All right, here I go. Anderson, I for both.
Just for the region.
Oh, Anderson, I.
Who's I?
About I.
Miss that I.
Most of the I for region.
Rainy I.
Wilson I.
All right.
Thank you.
Jared, thank you for managing it so well and helping us figure this all out.
Team effort. Glad we're able to do it.
Yes, very much so.
Okay. Okay, so with that, I think.
I wonder, this is our last meeting before graduation. I wonder if we might just take a moment. I want to mention that the Concord Town Report is available, just by way of news. And we haven't heard about graduation plans. Could we get thirty seconds on that from somebody?
Here. They've evolved a number of times as the state's guidance has changed. So we are actually processing from the lower field out onto the field. The kids are not going inside. And we've been able to group open up the audience membership, which we're excited about. The rest will look fairly similar to last year. The kids will still come up and collect their own diploma, not shaking hands. This is as I understand it, and I'll be honest, it's been hard for me to keep up because they've been adjusting almost daily over there right now. But nine o'clock on Saturday morning and looks to be a a nice warm morning and we're excited that it's all coming together.
Great. And congratulations to all those seniors.
Yeah, they're having a lot of busy, fun stuff this week and getting a lot of the normal senior week activities with some COVID modifications, but there's a lot going on for them. So we're glad for that, too.
Do we have school committee representation?
Sarah's on it.
Good. All right. Thank you.
So the, the rest of the committee is not expected to be there.
You are welcome, but not expected.
Okay.
Just let me know if you're planning on coming. We'll make sure you know where your seat is and all. But if you're not, that's fine and we'll be recorded and you can enjoy it though.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, thank you. Let's see, we looking for a motion now?
I think so.
I will move that the Concord School Committee and Concord, am I looking for anyone? Yes, sorry. That the Congress School Committee and Carlisle Regional School Committee will enter into executive session under purpose two of the open meeting law to conduct strategy sessions with all non-union personnel and purpose three of the open meeting law to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with collective bargaining units, Concord Teachers Association, Concord Carlisle Teachers Association, Local seventeen oh three, State Council ninety-three, AFL-CIO CPS Building Service Workers, CCHS Building Surface Workers Maintenance and not to return to open session. That was moved for both.
Second. For both.
Anderson.
Who's I for both?
And I for both.
Miss that I for both.
Most of the I for region.
Rainy I for both.
Wilson for region.
Okay.
Okay.
See you there.